This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this regular meeting of the Bader City Council. It is Thursday, September 22nd, 2022, at the time of 6:06 PM. Roll call.
Randy Hall.
Yes.
Jason Daley.
Here.
And Mike.
Here.
Michael Ferguson.
Here.
And Mike Carson.
Mike is working tonight, unfortunately. We have a quorum. Plea de legions. Mike and Josh, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
We were going international there for a second.
My mind went wrong.
All good organization, I mean. Power to it. Alright, so the mayor's report. The Washington State Archives granted the city a local records grant. This would be to, well, for anyone that's been into the back office there, you see there's a lot of, a lot of records and boxes on the walls there, and there's even more in the city shop across the road over there. So, they gave, they gave the city a grant to fund extra overtime or procedures to catch up on all that kind of stuff. So, thank you to Kristin Miller, our admin clerk, for getting that set up. And so hopefully they'll be able to catch up on some paperwork. Worden Park bid solicitation started for rain gutters on the picnic pavilion. As you know, last year we were going to get this done and, and so before it starts raining again, we want to get some gutters on that, on the older pavilion there, help preserve the area. The first bid already came in and it's very affordable, so hopefully the next council meeting will have that contractor selection for you. Also, Worden Park, the footer installation is good for next week on the 29th, on Thursday. That'd be for the new playground shelter. Also, for Worden Park, the jail and roofing work should be beginning soon. The contract is here and signed, so we expect that to get going very soon, too. Hopefully we'll have all those facilities protected for the winter coming up. The Southwest Lewis County Chamber of Commerce, this particular Chamber of Commerce has been on again and off again for a number of years. Last few years, they wanted to get going again. It's been a little rough, of course, but they did invite myself and the Toledo mayor to come give a presentation about the city. And so I took that opportunity to go and promote the city and say all the wonderful things that's happening in Bader and, open people's eyes to what's going on on the side of the freeway, so.
Thank you, Jeff.
Hopefully, we'll start seeing more from that organization. And if you know any businesses that want to join a Southwest Lewis County Chamber of Commerce, just look them up. They've got a website and you can join that, that organization. It seems like they've got a lot of influential and very intelligent folks over there. Lastly, the wastewater treatment plant outfall diffuser. We're being, we're beginning discussions regarding an eventual construction funding package for that. We want to make sure that we don't get in over our head with this project. And end up designing something that we can't afford in the long run. So, we're talking with the Department of Ecology, who is a grant source for that. Also, we're going to start talking about to the folks at Department of Commerce for the community development block grants and things like that, so we can make sure that, we get a well-funded package that we can afford in the end. Moving on, council reports. Any members of the council have anything to report?
Not yet.
Alright. Moving on to agenda approval. There are two changes to the agenda. I believe you have a small printout with the, with the changes to the vouchers. Also, I did make a mistake on city business number five. It says Rockland's change order number six is $67,000. If you, if you've reviewed that change order already, it's, that was only part of it. That was one portion of it. The actual change order is for, 104, 448 and 30 cents. So, please someone can approve the agenda with the change to the vouchers and the change order amount.
Motion to approve the amounts.
The agenda.
End of the agenda, excuse me. I jumped ahead.
So you are approving the agenda with the, can you read the voucher amounts on the small?
Oh, right here. Make a motion to approve the agenda with the correction of the voucher totals and the month, $110,962.84 total for September 2022,
And with the updated Rockland's change order price as well? You don't have to say it. What's that? And, and this amendment as well?
The change order, the amount's wrong. $67,992.21, but that amount is incorrect.
And it should be 104.
104,000 and don't know what.
448.30.
448.30, is that on here?
No.
No. So I don't know where he gave it to me. I don't have it in front of me.
So, I think we captured that. We have a motion by, Mr. Ferguson to approve the agenda with the change to the voucher totals, as well as updating city business item number five, with the correct change order final price. Do we have a second? Seceded by Mr. Hall. Further discussion? Alright, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright. Moving on, two minutes approval.
I make a motion that we approve the council meeting on 9/8/2022.
We have a motion by Ms. McIntosh to approve, approve the council meeting minutes from September 8th. Do we have a second?
Yeah. Okay, Jeff.
Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval. Make a reminder that the updated totals are on your small sheet.
After the pledge allegiance, I just did, yeah.
Motion to approve. So we already did approve, didn't we?
We approved the agenda with the change to the vouchers.
Oh.
Now we approve the vouchers.
I made a motion to approve. The end of September, now, $110,962.84 total for September 2022, $159,089.89.
We have a motion by Mr. Hall to approve the vouchers as stated. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seceded by Mr. Ferguson. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excuse me. City business item number one, council to consider resolution 192022, planning committee appointment of Mr. Curtis Gall. Curtis has been attending some of the planning committee meetings already and familiar with some of the topics matter. Curtis has actually already been, sending city hall some advice on a variety of topics. And I can say that so far everyone's very impressed with your work, and I think you'd be, a great member, and I don't have a hesitation in recommending him for your appointment, your confirmation.
Okay. I can argue if you want.
Well, you can. I mean, you could interrogate Mr. Gall, too.
Let me get my thumb screws out. If he says sorry, it's alright.
Alright, well, it's in the form of a resolution. We started doing the resolution method a couple, a couple of years ago for both the planning committee and the park board. Keeps track of the terms and everything, so.
I make a resolution to have Curtis Gall appointed to the planning committee.
It's, the resolution number is.
Oh, resolution number 192022.
We have a motion by Ms. McIntosh to approve resolution 192022, the planning committee appointment of Mr. Curtis Gall. Do we have a second? Seceded by Mr. Ferguson.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do we have that paperwork ready, or do we have it ready at the next planning committee meeting? December again? Planning committee, okay, excellent. So, Curtis, congratulations. Welcome on to the planning committee. So at the next meeting, take your first seat. Thank you.
Let me get a quick.
I'm putting you on.
Round one of applause, round one of applause.
Alright, council to consider resolution 18-2022, terminating, terminating the pandemic emergency proclamation. So, motion to approve that. With, way back when, at the beginning of the whole thing, 2020, pretty much not only the Washington state, but all of the local governments as well, went along, went on board with it and, declared a emergency proclamation. The state is rescinding that now. Obviously, everyone's probably heard that in the news, and so all the local governments are as well. So, if council approves resolution 18-2022, then the proclamation, then I will read this.
I make a resolution to terminate the pandemic emergency proclamation 18-2022.
We have a motion by Ms. McIntosh to approve resolution 182022. Do we have a second?
I was making it.
Any, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The proclamation. Proclamation, terminating emergency proclamation. Whereas Lewis County Public Health District has been responding to the COVID-19 outbreak since February of 2020, and whereas on February 29th, 2020, Governor Jay Inslee declared a state of emergency in response to the new cases of COVID-19 in Washington state, and whereas on March 16th, 2020, the Lewis County Commissioners adopted resolution 20-100, declaring a state of emergency based on COVID-19 in Lewis County, implementing the county's comprehensive emergency management plan and establishing Lewis County government to take extraordinary measures. And, whereas on March 18th, 2020, the situation was sufficiently serious that it was necessary to proclaim an emergency within the city of Bader due to the possibility that the spread of COVID-19 may become a pandemic. And whereas on March 18th, 2020, the mayor issued a proclamation of emergency related to COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas on March 18th, 2020, the city council ratified and confirmed proclamation of urgency issued by the mayor. And, whereas on Jan, July 1st, 2021, Governor Inslee issued proclamation number 20-25.14, Washington Ready, which in part recognizes that data reflect that the number and percent of vaccinated Washington residents continue to increase, while the number of new COVID-19 cases, hospitalizations, and deaths are decreasing, and the governor thereby ordered that movement occupancy and face covering restrictions be modified to set forth in proclamation number 20-25.14. And whereas, on September 8th, 2022, Governor Inslee announced that all remaining COVID-19 emergency orders in the state of emergency based on COVID-19 would end by October 31st, 2022. Now, therefore, as mayor of the city of Bader, hereby do proclaim as follows, section one, emergency previously proclaimed no longer exists. Based on changing circumstances and improving conditions on Bader and more broadly related to the COVID-19 pandemic, the emergency previously proclaimed by the proclamation of emergency as defined in chapter 38.52 RCW, RCW 43.06.01012, and RCW 3904.283, that was issued by the mayor on March 18th, 2020, no longer exists within the city of Bader. Section two proclamation of urgency, the proclamation of urgency issued by the mayor on May 18th, 2020, and ratified and confirmed on May 18th, 2020 by the city council, hereby terminated and shall no longer be in effect dated today.
Yay.
Where's my glass of water? Bam. We're healed. Thank you. Moving on to, city council business number three, council to consider grant agreement approval, Lewis County funds for the wastewater treatment plant outfall engineering. So this is an agreement between the city of Bader and Lewis County. Lewis County is offering us a grant in the amount of $94,000 and change in our efforts to design, excuse me, our new outfall project, or outfall diffuser for the wastewater plant. It's a $116,000 project, and they're covering almost all of it. So this is just an agreement saying, thank you, Lewis County, we accept your money.
Question. At one point, at what point does Bader take control of its water and sewer again?
When the city council says, we already have control over our sewer. But the water.
Are they on the same bill then?
They're not on the same bill. Water and sewer aren't on the same, aren't on the same bill. You should be getting two bills, unless you have septic.
Yeah, septic.
So you don't.
I still pay sewer.
Why do you pay sewer? This is not, this is not item number three of city business, but.
I'm sorry.
Why are you paying sewer if you don't have a sewer account? Before I talk to Diana.
You're a questioner. I just paid a bill.
I wish we had many people like you in the city.
I inherited it.
Okay, well, anyway.
I get bills and I just work extra hard. So when, the answer to my question, though, would be when do.
So.
I mean, we have the. You take money from the county.
No, the county, the county has full control of the water system. They run it independently. The city of Bader does not have any input whatsoever in that. We don't have control of the fees, the employees, anything. We do have a written agreement with the county on a way that we can request to get it back. There were a number of goals that the city had to meet. Because you remember back in the day when it got taken away, the city had financial hardship. There were a lot of boiler warnings because of mismanagement. We weren't taking care of the water system, so the health department and the county took their way. But we have met all, so after your question, we have met most of those goals, if not all of them already, and we are in a situation where we could start the process of requesting to get it back if we wanted to.
We just need management.
The, the, the plan, there is a written plan. There's a book. It's on the desk back there. It's about gift, this thick. It tells us exactly what we need to do to get it back. It includes a business plan, having employees in place, training in place, all of that stuff, right? We don't just get it back and then try to figure out what's going on.
Right, yeah.
And so it's about a year-long process. Once we say we're ready to start, it takes about a year to transfer it over.
So right now, they're two separate entities.
Completely separate, yeah.
The city still has control of the, so the, the money from the county is just a grant, a gift?
Or something different, yeah.
It's totally unrelated. So, Lewis County, similar to all the cities, had America Rescue Plan. Is that what ARPA stands for? Basically, COVID relief funds. All of the, just like private citizens got checks from the government. Remember back in the day, we got a bunch of money from the government, like, here you go, here's money to help you with your COVID issues, whatever it was. Cities and counties and states each got money as well. So Bader got 180 or something like that, 180,000. The county got 15 million. It was based on population and a variety of things. And so the county has extra money. And we applied for a grant, and they're using part of their ARPA money to fund our request for assistance with our infrastructure project.
Great.
Just very nice of them.
That is very nice of them.
Maybe. To, accepting this.
To, consider grant approval agreement. Is that what we're, we're on right here?
Accepting the.
Item number three. Accepting grant approval agreement.
We have a motion by Mr. Ferguson to, approve the grant agreement.
I'll second that.
Mr. Carson, was that you?
And by the way, I'm here.
By Mr. Carson. There is, yeah, there's not a resolution. It's just a grant agreement. Alright, we have a first and a second for the, excuse me, the wastewater treatment plant outfall project grant from Lewis County. Any discussion? Hearing none. Any opposed?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Most of the ways. Moving on to item number four. Council to consider resolution 17-2022, the agreement for outwall, the fall diffuser engineering services. So as you know, Civil West has been representing us for a number of years on our current wastewater treatment plant, upgrade process. Everything's down there, has been engineered by them, and they have overseen that, and we have been very, very happy with their firm. This resolution would, update the agreement to continue to use Civil West for these new outfall services that they will provide to us. So instead of going out for engineering services bid to an unknown entity, we can continue to use our own, our current experts on the project. So, this, this would, assign Civil West to the project.
Which is terrible.
Basically, yeah, we're going to maintain, continue to, continue to have them as, as our consultants for our wastewater plant. And for those of you that are concerned that, you know, is there, is there a company out there that might do it for cheaper? The, unlike going out for bid for, say, I'm building a building, I want to go out for bid, everyone submits their, their cost, and then you choose the cheapest one. Engineering services are not like that. Because they are a specialty, they are kind of like, you want the highest quality provider possible, right? You can think that there's, think of it as something where you don't, in this case, you don't want the cheapest person. You want the person that's going to give you the best product. So, for instance, imagine trying to, you're going to hire someone to paint a mural. Are you going to go out to the lowest bidder on a mural? Probably not. You want someone that has very good qualifications and that will paint a good mural for you. Engineering services are just like that. You don't ask for a bid. You ask for qualifications. And they say, we're the best one because of all of these reasons. And then you pick that company, and then you negotiate a contract price with them. So, it's a little bit different for engineering services than a normal bid process.
Have you negotiated the price yet?
They offered the price. That was the $116,000 already, which was very nice that we knew that upfront. And that's how we knew that we could try to get grant funding for that and get most of that covered upfront. So, a little unusual that we were able to do that. Anyway, just a little bit of education as to how, how the different processes are between, going out for bid versus going out for engineering services. It's a little bit different.
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution 17-2022, the agreement for outfill diffuser engineering services.
We have a motion by, we did approve resolution 172022, the agreement for the outfall of the user for engineering service. That was Mike Carson. I second. Oh, what did I say?
You said Dave.
That's fine.
Who was that? Dave.
Okay. Mike. I'm here. And so, the first letter of their name, so why, Dave or Mike? It's in the agreement. It's written in the agreement.
Yep.
For the outfall engineering services, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Let me read that. Alright. Moving on, item number five, council to consider Rockland's change order number six in the amount of $104,448.30. So if you see that change order, for the construction project, the vast majority of the $104,000 were for the issues surrounding the groundwater. If you remember earlier this year in the winter, we had a lot of problems with groundwater underneath the new, pond liners, and there was a lot of work that went into trying to resolve those issues. And so, they were, pumping water out of the ground in the area. They were pumping extra water out of the, out of the ponds themselves as they were trying to work on them. And so there was, there was water leaking in through the liner from the ground into the ponds. And so there was a lot of unforeseen work around that. And so that's the majority of what this change order comes from. Also, there were chlorine building plumbing modifications, some pump changes, more electrical stuff, outfall pipe changes, flushing the system, remote access for the electronics, and then asphalt costs increased. So when they originally went out for bid, that, if you've seen down there, there's a new, the new roadway that goes in there. Obviously, the prices for roadway construction materials have gone up, and so this takes, takes into that account. That's what, what's the change orders, change orders for. And again, this construction project is fully grant funded. We have more than enough money in the funds still to cover it without affecting our ratepayers whatsoever.
I make a motion to approve Rockland's change order number six.
We have a motion by Mr. Ferguson to approve Rockland's change order number six. Do we have a second?
I need a lunch special soup. I'll second that.
Discussion.
Aye. Alright.
Alright, item number six, council to consider ordinance 2022-04, establishing development standards for accessory dwelling units. So as you know, the planning committee and our city planner have been working on accessory dwelling unit verbiage for our city code for quite a while now. They've held public hearings, they've had workshops, and this is the final product of that. So it's been well-vetted by, by your peers. It's my, I, we have all, we all sort of seen this at some point in the past, but I know Mike hadn't, and it wasn't included in his council packet. Only the ordinance was. And so I did provide that to you right before the meeting. It's only two pages long. I don't know if you were comfortable making a discussion about that tonight, or if you wanted to table it until the next meeting.
I make a motion, we table it to the next meeting.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. McIntosh.
I already read it over.
Table the ADU discussion until the next meeting. Is there a second?
I want a motion to approve it after reading it through.
Oh, it's not all speak at once.
Is there a, to, to the next meeting?
I'll second it. Third, first seven.
The council can review this a little further. Any discussion, a motion to table it? That's why I want to make sure people have the opportunity to look at it. There's other discussion about tabling this. Any favors to table this until the next meeting? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, it doesn't matter what Mike had to say because there's a majority vote to table it, so. Motion carries. We'll table this until the next meeting. All right, so more fun stuff. Item seven, eight, and nine are all kind of related. Item number seven, council to discuss the twenty twenty-three budget season schedule. So you should all have a calendar that, that shows you what the budget season's going to look like. And might be your first budget season. So in the budget season, there's a variety of public notices that need to be put in the paper, as well as public hearings available for members of the public to come before us and express their feelings on a variety of different subjects. And so all of those have to be scheduled in advance so folks know when to come and discuss them. And so that's what this calendar is showing. It's showing on the Wednesday items, it says notice of public hearing. Those will be when you'll see things in the newspaper about our public notices. And then, for instance, on the twenty-seventh, we'll have our first public hearing of October. On November tenth, there'll be another public hearing, and then if council changes their meeting, December first as well, there'll be another public hearing. Some of those public hearing dates are, well, they're all mandated by law about when they need to happen by. For instance, one of them needs to happen before the first Monday in December. Another one has to happen before the end of November, and so a lot of this is dictated by the state code, so.
Is there a time for this, or?
Is there a time?
Yeah.
I say we table it till next year.
I second.
You're table, table budget season until next year? I think I can veto, right?
Yeah, that sounds good to me, just.
So.
Joking.
Okay. So, anyway, so this is kind of information. Most of this lines up with our current city council meetings, so there won't be anything new for folks to come do. There are a couple of things to, to discuss, though. For instance, our second council meeting on November always falls on Thanksgiving, and traditionally the council votes to move its meeting to the week prior. So we have back-to-back meetings on the tenth and the seventeenth in this case, but then we don't have to come out on Thanksgiving, which is nice. It's a holiday and we'd be by ourselves because Diana will be on vacation.
I have family coming. I say keep that meeting right there.
No. And then in December as well, while December twenty-second is not a holiday, it is Christmas week, and usually we bump that meeting earlier in the month as well. In this case, the recommendation would be we move the council meeting to December first. And then, and then we, that would all, we'd also be able to hand, hold the required public hearing on December first as well. And then we'd have our council meeting and the hearing on the same day, and hey, we'd all be here, so it would look out just wonderfully, so.
Motion to approve the schedule.
So any, okay, before we do that, any discussion about this schedule in general, hopefully everyone's gotten a chance to take a look. Jason, do you have any comments on the, on the schedule?
No.
Okay.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm good with the, I'm good with it.
Okay. One Thursday is just as good for you as another Thursday.
Yep. This is terrible.
Yep. Yeah. If, if that's okay, then we can move on. If everyone understands that, we could move on to items number eight and nine, where council makes a motion and will vote on changing the meeting days for each of those two days. So moving on to some item number eight, council to consider moving its November twenty-fourth meeting, which is Thanksgiving, to November seventeenth, the previous Thursday at six P M. Do we have a motion for that?
I make a motion that we move the meeting from November twenty-fourth to.
Do we have a motion by Ms. McIntosh to move the meeting to November twenty-fourth, November?
We got a taco salad for table seven?
Second, Mr. Ferguson, discussion?
I got it, yeah.
All those in favor, we're going to the number four question.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? And then last week. Which is during Christmas week. The sixty-nine. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion.
We have a motion by Ms. McIntosh to move the meeting, and I was suggesting, do we have a second? Second, and this, Mr. Ferguson. Any discussion? Fair enough. All those in favor for moving December twenty-second meeting, number one, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right. Public comment, any members of the public have any comments? Any members of the elected officials have any comments?
Nope. For once.
I'd like to thank you for your kind words, brother.
You're welcome. Okay.
So can I, there's no solicitation in the newsletter, you know, or announce any kind of events, like specials or?
Nonprofits usually what they have.
If you have a 501(c), then you can.
Yeah, we don't really have an official policy, but, you know, organizations that give back to the community, we probably wouldn't have any issues. I mean, Parwell Farms would run a sink on soap. We probably wouldn't put that in the newsletter, but. Not to pick on.
So if it's for profit, then no.
Probably not.
Like a 501(c) and.
Like if the, maybe if the church was doing like a, a free breakfast for some reason, or the, you know, the Lions Club does a lot of things like the turkey baskets and things like that, and.
And the Fourth of July.
Yeah, just that, that kind of stuff. We try to make that in there, so the word out for folks. Okay?
I like the idea that Mike mentioned earlier about bringing, starting to bring the water back to Vader. I don't know if we need to.
I'll, I'll have that on the agenda in the next, in the budget season here. For council to discuss.
Or is it, is it something that we will need to discuss in regards to the budget?
I think there is going to be, there is going to be some cost to the city because we're going to need an attorney to help us navigate the process. So there's going to be some additional attorneys' costs because of that.
Okay, perfect.
Any other discussion, comments, observations, anyone else paying bills they don't need to?
Oh, yeah, that's always.
Do I really have to have a business license and be a general contractor just because of my mailcoms to Vader? I don't, I mean, if I don't work here, because I haven't yet. Yeah?
All right, this meeting is adjourned at six forty-six P M. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.